Right, you can do right here. In front, right here, you push the. We're still trying to get adjusted here.
I just wanna be able to see it, just in case it gets cut off.
Or if you wanna hold it, that's up to you. Okay. We're just waiting for you to record.
I'll just hold it for now.
Okay. So, we're gonna go ahead and start with council study session for Tuesday, oh, eight point eleven at twenty twenty-three. And we're starting at six oh nine. So, old business. We're gonna go ahead and talk on A. Discussion of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven. Authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Yakima County Technology Services for TikTok. Okay, so do we, do I have to read all this again? No, okay.
I thought we did it.
Okay. So, um, new business. Do I just do A through G?
All together.
Okay. So, um, new business is A through G, and this is, um. A is gonna be discussion of the system tech fiber optic repair. So, if you go to your packets, we don't have them numbered unfortunately. But, um, speak, the sprinklers were put out this week, um, or last week on Thursday. And, um, so it's gonna be this system tech like this. This paper. It's gonna say system tech on the top, a solution-driven company. So, when, um, they were putting in the sprinklers, um, apparently they hit a piece of fiber optic in the ground. So, um, we went back to look, I found some, um, paper trail. And in twenty twenty, they had hit that.
Same thing.
That same, uh, fiber. And I think that's what I stopped the project. Because it's not dug into the ground, you know, enough. So, um, we had already completed the sprinklers and it spliced it, I believe. And so now we gotta see if we can get it fixed. So, we're looking at.
So, is that gonna be their cost or our cost?
Our cost.
Why did they do it?
Because we didn't have a map. We didn't know that there was fiber in the ground until it hit.
And they said that there was fiber, that they did that the last time.
Yeah, but we didn't find out till afterwards, because when we made some phone calls, the gentleman said, oh, it happened again, so. I started digging for paper and it came up that it had been hit in twenty twenty. And I called Joe in and he remembers that it had got hit in twenty twenty.
Where was this at?
Out at the governor's park where they put the sprinklers.
Yeah.
In the ground.
Is that the one that ran from the well?
Mm-hmm.
There could be some paperwork on that.
But we didn't find it. I had to call Jamin. From G and O, and he's the one who sent me the, the copy of the whole fiber. And he outlined it in yellow and then the water lines in red. But he said he'd been sending all that stuff prior, to prior winters, and I'm like, I didn't see it. So now I started a binder where we did this project and I'm gonna put this in there, so that way if it ever comes up again. They can call these people to come out and replace it. So it does need to be replaced. And, um, one of the prices is thirty-five hundred. And, um, the second one is fifty-two hundred. But if you look and compare, um. I think the fifty-two hundred is a little bit more, um, what we need just to kinda save the city if it happens again. If not, um. Use a little cheaper route and it may not be covered, won't be covered. So, um. And this is what Jamin said, that he only knows a few people that do that, or this people that do the fiber, if I'm correct. So.
So, are we gonna go with the fifty-two hundred?
It's gonna be up to. So I started looking, so if you go down, does the splicing exist, existing six strand fiber optic cable? And then if you go down on the next one, it does provide an install six LC OM three MM connectors. The splice existing six strand fiber optic cable to new fiber optic cable. And, um, permanent label, test and warrant fiber optic cable. So, um.
Well, the last one, the first one does too. Another last.
Mm-hmm.
So you two go with the other.
Yeah. So. You just let me know what you think, um, what we need to do. Three hundred and fifty, um, seven feet of broken fiber. Where the last time they broke it, it was two thousand or tw- yeah, twenty sev- twenty-seven or twenty, um.
Two hundred and seventy feet?
No, two thousand and seventy, I wanna say, or twenty, yes, my god, I didn't bring it, but yes. So, now we'll have this in place and then it'll be three hundred and fifty-seven broken fiber. And my thing is, it wasn't even two feet dug into the ground. So.
Does that mean it wasn't deep enough?
Wasn't deep enough.
Well, if they did it, then why didn't they do it deep enough?
He says that they don't, they're not required to. And I'm like, well, you could've at least put some kind of gravel to where, you know, once you start digging, you hit that gravel, you know not to dig. Yeah. So, um, yeah.
So we have to decide if we're gonna go with the fifty-two or the thirty-five?
Mm-hmm.
So if we go with the fifty-two, uh, does that mean we're gonna have insurance now on it if they do it again on the next time?
Well. Yeah, I had asked him and he said, yeah, he goes, but they don't guarantee it if it should happen again, because this is the second, the second time. So I'm hoping now with sprinklers already in, we don't have to do it anymore.
Hopefully. Because our grass is just gonna be solid.
I just, I just tell them the, the, he can give us, you know, like a, a map for the irrigation. And sadly, he can point at, you know, what.
Oh, he already did, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Jamin already gave us that.
Okay.
But see, I didn't have that at first. So, and the sprinkler guy had no idea that there was fiber down there in the ground.
Well, no, why would he?
Yeah, so if we didn't.
So.
So you just let me know what price you wanna go with and we can go from there.
Well, depends which one we have better option, better options.
Well, they're, they're real similar, except for he puts in a few different words, but I wonder if it's any different, like the splice existing six strand fiber. Only thing he put in was new fiber optic to the new fiber optic, and the top one doesn't say to the new.
Permanent label.
Just test.
Makes it.
So I don't know, but makes a difference.
So I mean, we can, we, I can ask more questions and then.
Why don't we, and see like with the first one, find out.
What do you want me to ask?
Ask him if, if, on the last one where he's gonna test your warrant fiber optic cable, if he's gonna connect it to the exi- to the new one, like the first, the last.
He, he is gonna connect it to the existing one?
Yeah.
The first one has to. Yeah.
So what's the difference then?
So I guess.
The only difference is those six LC.
Yeah, OM three MM connector.
It asks for two thousand almost. Or a thousand eight hundred more.
Because I believe that's the, the cord, the fiber goes inside that, um, what is it called?
Kind of cover it, so.
Yeah.
That's thirteen hundred dollars more. Eighteen and.
Eighteen hundred.
I don't.
Yeah, because the one is thirty-five hundred and the other one is fifty-three hundred.
Maybe we can ask the first guy what to.
This was.
Does it recommend, or if he can do that, what he would charge us to do it, maybe it's still, it would be less. I don't know, whatever you guys think, I, I just think that's a lot of money for six things, but.
Okay.
And what are the fibers for anyway?
That is, goes up to our water line and it.
Okay, gotcha.
Our, um, water tower goes up, then it sends a message to start filling up the next, um, well, is what I believe Joe.
To start the.
To start the well, so the well will kick in.
Or if that was sent really or something for cable.
No.
No.
So I'll ask questions and we'll bring that back, okay?
Okay.
Table that.
Table this.
And now we're gonna go ahead and go on to, um, the discussion of, uh, B. Discussion of Governor's Park sod. So, the gentleman, um, who installed the sprinklers, um, he let us know today and he said he could get us an estimate, but I thought I'd bring it. I thought he was gonna have it ready for us. So. It's fif- a hundred pallets is what's needed for grass, for sod out there.
Both sides?
Just the one.
Just the one side.
Mm-hmm, just the one side. And it's eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand for how many pallets?
It's a hundred pallets and it's fifty rolls per pallet.
So that's, it's fifty thousand square foot.
No, eighteen thousand dollars.
Eighteen thousand dollars, it's fifty thou- it's fifty.
Square foot.
Yeah.
It's five hundred square foot for pallet.
Yeah. That's what it is.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, so.
Is that reasonable for one?
Well, it's, it's more than an acre, we, they're gonna, they're gonna do the sod, it's more than, more than an acre.
Our, no, our city guys will be putting it down.
But is it, how big is it?
It's gonna be.
One acre, yeah, one acre is, is forty-three thousand square foot.
Yeah.
Almost forty-four thousand square foot, so that should be a little bit more than an acre.
Yeah, so he said for that, him and the guys measured a hundred, um, well, fifteen.
Fifteen hundreds, fifteen hundred feet long for a hundred feet or eighty feet width.
Yeah. So, he figured it out and, uh, each pallets covers five hundred square feet.
Yeah, well, probably cover five hundred square foot.
And so they, um, and each roll was, you know, cheaper than what I got at Lowe's. Lowe's is eleven sixty-eight a roll. A roll.
A roll, oh yeah, it is.
Yeah. So he said, um, yeah, it would be eighteen thousand to put the sod out there. Um, just for sod and then the guys could put it down, or else we can go with seed.
I think hydro seed is a lot better. If the system is working properly.
Yeah, if the system.
If the system is working properly. The hydro seed, Ohio Moach, for five thousand, we can get it done.
Yeah, and.
Park over there.
No, hydro seed, no, hydro seed was gonna cost us twenty thousand.
More, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Hydro seed is twenty thousand just to do that side.
Oh, a lot of money, let me go out there, offer some seed on it.
Well, I, the guys said they could do the seed. Yeah, the guys said they can do seed, but it's just a matter of, you know.
Right now's a good time, 'cause you know, late in, in May or June is gonna be too late, but right now's a good time to put the hydro seed, by the beginning of May, they come out already.
I don't know, but that seems like a lot of money for.
For sod.
I don't know what our. We have any.
And you know, those boys, they're not gonna get it done in, in a week.
No, you have any idea what the big block costs, is, is anybody remember?
They can lay out, they can lay out ten thousand square foot in a day for five guys.
Well, they quoted us just for this side of the park, twenty thousand from the first time.
Mm-hmm.
Just for hydro seed on one side of the park, so. So, um, we can do seed, we can do bags of seed, if you all want seed, that'll be the cheapest route.
So. That means that eighteen thou- that eighteen thousand is for cover, yes, the grass.
Just the.
Yes, the, yes, with the sod.
Just for the sod, but just for this side only, that's already the sprinklers.
Yeah, okay.
So everybody just brings a spreader and a bunch of seeds and nope.
And then.
We have to even it out.
How about if we call Ideosah and they give us a better deal? For so many square foot, I, I just saw in Pasco.
That's where he's going, because that's why he's getting it so cheap for us. Cause if not, it was gonna cost us more. He's getting it at cost.
So one pallet costs maybe like a hundred and forty?
Mm-hmm, hundred and. It was a hundred.
Hundred dollars for a pallet.
It was a little bit more than a hundred, the pallet, yeah. So. And that's where he went to Tri-Cities.
Tri-City.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So, I mean, we can go, we can try and see if we can get some donated. So we can try and do that. The thing is.
Take too long. We're gonna do something.
Well, yeah, yeah, well, that's, the weather right now isn't time to plant the grass.
Yeah, right now, good time, because it's, it's a good time, the weather is cool, yeah. So no, I estimated, um, a hundred pounds, a hundred pounds for a hundred and twenty-five dollar a pallet, and they come out with thirteen, thirteen thousand five hundred.
And can.
And a hundred pounds, uh, no, it's the price that I just asked before. I don't know how much is the.
Oh, it went up.
But everything went up.
Yeah, and he, he had post, first quoted me like a hundred and twenty-five, but I guess it went up, so now it's, it went up two thousand, because he had put it as, um, sixteen thousand, so now it went up two thousand.
Wow.
Eighteen thousand.
Yeah, so it's a hundred and eighty per pallet.
And that's still cheaper than the Lowe's, the eighteen sixty-eight a roll.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
Did you check with Home Depot?
At the same place.
The same?
Yeah, like all the stores, they sell, they sell the sod in the same.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, I looked into Lowe's and Home Depot and it was the same, it is the same grass. So.
Don't you guys have any friends that?
So let me know what you guys wanna do, if you wanna wait on that one.
We can't wait on it, though.
Or we can do seed, not hydro seed, but regular.
Regular seed, yeah. Yeah, the problem is if, that's what I'm saying, if the sprinklers, if it's working properly, because the seed, we have to water it three times a day or four times a day. In the morning, midday, and the evening.
If the wind doesn't, we have to, cause the wind will blow away.
Well, I think if they, they water it first and then throw the seed and then water it, it should stick.
Have to repack.
We need to till first, till nice and green, then till and then put the seed and then water it right away, so the water pushes the seed down.
Mm-hmm. Let me know what you'll be saying.
What do you guys think?
So you're gonna put all the city workers to do that, lay on the grass?
Yeah, we laid all the sod over there at that park.
Okay.
All of it.
Yeah. And that was why you. Put the seed in.
For eighteen thousand, pretty good, but you know, and if we reseed, if we reseed it only, you spend like fifteen hundred dollars, and that's all.
And we can get the, they have grass that grows like right away.
Yeah.
A quick.
Quick grass. So we can go with seed.
I agree with the seed, what do you guys think, the seed?
I agree with the whole, yeah.
Okay.
Tootie?
I like the price a lot better.
Well, yeah, the price is a lot better.
It's a lot better.
Okay. We can do the seed, so we'll go ahead and do seed. Okay? That was my, my first option and then the hay on top. But hay's, hay's expensive though, so.
Well, and you can get, we can get a roll and roll it too, because they have, you know, that big round roller that you can roll and it puts it down in further. If, if the wind's bad and the weather.
No, but as soon as we finish spreading, when they finish spreading, they can roll the sprinklers and sprinklers, they just push it down the grass a little bit.
So. We'll, I'll go ahead and I'll get some seed then, okay?
Okay.
So, we're gonna go on, go on to C, discussion of the splash pad and location and the fees. So, um, I did talk to Jamin this morning, um, he's on vacation, but he took my call, so that was nice. So, um, this is through Northwest Playground Equipment. So, um, he said that, that when he sent me these, he said I had two quotes and I told him I didn't see two quotes. I just got the one and I went back to look in my emails and I still didn't find that one, so. This is a quote, uh, um, just equipment. Equipment only, and it's not including the installation. So, and I thought I had seen the one that was like ninety-four thousand or something like that. So keep in mind, um, we are going to be using our phone money with this.
Could we call, can I, if I could find Christopher's number in the Tri-Cities, could I get a quote?
Mm-hmm. Do they do that?
All this at one time, yes.
Okay, yeah. If they, yeah, if you can and we can get another quote. Okay.
What's the quote, can he have given you?
Huh?
What's the quote?
So just for the equipment alone, it's forty-nine thousand. Just for the equipment, so it would be, um, what is right here under the water, Odyssey. And you can go online and you can see it as well, because these are all pictures, you know. Yeah. So. I know there was one that was fancier and I told him, no, it was gonna cost us more, so I just said something simple for the kids. So. Um, we can, we can bring this back again and talk about it while, you know, you can find out.
Yeah, I'll, I'll find that.
Okay, have all this already somewhere. Okay, so we'll table that. Okay. Any more questions on that one?
What's the location?
No, a location would be, um, at Governor's Park.
Yeah, which end, that end or this?
Over this way, funneled terraces on that.
On the side?
Yeah.
Because they said there was one reason they wanted to put it over here at Brazil and how to do it, because I, I think they said that they dig this, it has to go real deep. And that's why they picked this, the last time they picked Brazil, but I don't know. Cause that's, that's probably what's gonna cost us is the depth, but they have to believe it.
Yeah, 'cause I talked to Jamin and I asked him, because he did ask me, well, what are you thinking? And I told him, well, Brazil Park, it's a nice, right off the highway, people could see it, a nice attraction.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, he's like, okay, but he never said anything about the other part, so.
I think he was the most one who was trying to.
Oh, okay, and I can ask him to come out and check. And I think the only reason I thought maybe over here, it'd be more open, when people are driving by, stop.
Oh, I like this location.
Yeah.
That's, you know, I was just remembering.
We could do, um. The water park and then our, the splash pad, do maybe two metal tables and a few trees, but nothing too, you know, maybe some green trees, look nice. And then we, so we were gonna wait on the sprinkler system until we figure out how much. Dimensions it's gonna be, how big, how wide, and then the sprinkler system can come in.
Cause they'll have to go around.
Mm-hmm, yeah, because they're gonna. So.
I think we should wait until we figure out their water situation.
Then we're gonna have enough water?
Yes.
I think we'll have enough, because Jamin would've told me, because I asked him.
Well, we will.
We've been to a lot of times and we still run out of water, even with the wells that we have now.
We won't run out if we get our water right to, to wells, but, um, my.
You gotta also think that you're gonna have a lot of evaporation and have those wells run all the time.
So this would only, we do, turn them on at a certain time and turn them off at a certain time.
And only for the summer.
Yeah, just for the summer.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but. It's.
Can, can we, okay, let's do this, can we do Ranger? Ranger, can we do Ranger and see what it costs them maybe? Cause did they have one?
I know they have. And I think this is a little bit smaller, I think this is a little bit smaller than Ranger.
Just get a, an estimate on what it costs them, run there.
How they run there.
Yeah.
And if I'm correct, I think there's just, uh, just rotates.
Rotates around.
Just rotates. Mm-hmm. So we can call and find out.
Just an estimate.
Like a waterfall.
Yeah.
Waterfall on the slide.
We have a nice one, I saw there.
So expensive. You can put like aromatic fuel in the pond and they're gonna.
Just breathe, because it doesn't use the water over again.
Yeah, I believe it does use the water over.
Give it recycle it, but a lot of it's gonna get evaporated too.
Yeah, into the, I understood, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we'll do a little bit, see what.
Check it into it.
Yeah.
Well, it would really be during the summer, right, for the kids.
Yeah, we'd just start in June and then end of August, and that's it.
And that's it.
Three months.
Three months.
Yeah.
True.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll look at, um, I'll call Ranger, um, for the splash pad and see what they.
If we, how much they figure out when the expenses and water supplies is all, how, how much water they use a month, monthly or whatever.
Okay.
Compared to before they got it and then after they got it.
Yeah.
Okay, so now, we're gonna go ahead and go on, any more, no more questions?
No, not one.
We're gonna go ahead and go on to B, discussion of cemetery for, uh, Gabriel Zamora. So, um, as you know, Mrs. Zamora passed away back in February. And, um, her daughter came in and, um, she wanted to pay for the plot and she knew her mom had paid for the plot already, um, back in nineteen eighty.
Yeah, when he died, when his son died.
Yeah, she had.
One of the things I found.
Was it, was it indicated in our books?
Uh, yeah, so what I do have is, I told her, she's like, I know my mom already had paid for my, her plot, and so, a couple of plots, and I believe it was for the brothers. And, um, she goes in, I know it's just right now, it's a lot, Rachel, she goes, so do you think, um. I'm gonna pay for it, I go, well, if you have a receipt and you can find the receipt, bring it to me, we, I'll take it to council, they may honor it, they may not, I am not sure, I can't speak for them. But, um, she's like, okay, I never thought she was gonna bring the receipt, so she brought the receipt.
Well, it is there, yeah.
Yeah, so this is the receipt she brought us, and it does say, um, town treasure receipt, mapped in Washington, and this was back, um, in April twenty-third, nineteen eighty. So at that time, plots were three hundred and ninety dollars.
Yeah.
So, um.
Well, ours was only five hundred when we bought it. Well, that was twenty years ago.
So she did pay for a full plot, if I'm correct, Yuli?
Yes.
And so we wanted to see if we can.
I think we have to.
Okay.
We have to.
Okay, because she did, she's right, she paid for it.
Yeah, but.
There's a receipt.
But we didn't have a receipt, we couldn't find it, so that's why I asked her to.
I never got a receipt for mine either, so I have two of them paid for it, and the only thing I have is a piece of paper from them stating what my plot was.
Okay, so we need to make sure, Yuli, that we keep up with receipts.
Have, have we looked for it in our, um, file system?
Well.
But it was indicated in the book page.
Yeah, because there's receipts that go back from like nineteen fifty-something. So I don't know who was in charge of this, was.
Yeah.
I, yeah.
Well, we see.
I'll have to look, no, like, when she come, when she went into the city hall, who, were you the one that spoke with her? Oh, okay, so I'll, I'll look for it in the, in our file system.
She did bring it, so I always wanna let you know, so I'll just go ahead and order it if we need to. Okay, so we'll be writing her, um, giving her a check of the difference, okay?
Okay.
Now, um, we're gonna go ahead and do, um. Discussion of mapped and code enforcement and animal impoundment. So they were supposed to be here, but they got called out on the call, so we'll go ahead and come back to that. So now we're gonna go ahead and go on to F, um, discussion of resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, authorizing the mayor to sign an employment agreement with Larry Verones for the position of city clerk slash treasurer. So, um, I know, I had Vera and Councilwoman Diana come in yesterday. And, um, had an interview out with him and, um, they scared.
Did you see my face? I, I am global, I believed her.
So, um, I wanna go ahead and, uh, if you guys wanna have some input and then we can.
This is Larry?
Yeah, Larry Verones.
And this is Larry, by the way.
Hey, Larry.
What's your last name again?
Briones.
Oh, Briones.
Her, his, uh, his friend is on. First Street, as you're going to Center Side.
So, um, we, he brought his resume and, um, looked very good, I showed it to Diane and, um, Vera. And his work experience is really good. And, um, he has not done government, if I'm correct, but.
Correct.
He is willing to learn and Yuli's willing to show him what she's learned already. And, um, they can do trainings together, because we've already reached out to, um, visions, so we just need to make a, a date so we can do it, the, the trainings together. Um, just so we kind of are on the same page, you know, and know what's going on. Um, so Yuli did her first check last Friday, and so she knows the program now to, to be able to help him do.
Well, that's the one I found a mistake in.
What was that?
I had the mistakes in my mouth, I said, that's the one I found a mistake in.
So.
I hope not.
Um, if you have any questions, um, Tony or.
Not going to, well, it'll be starting.
So he, he will be starting, um, Monday, or Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday.
Good.
And, uh, this is basically the contract, so we, we need to read that, see what is being offered and.
Mm-hmm. So everything's already gone to the attorney, and the attorney wrote up the contract, and he came in this evening, Larry, and he, um, signed his contract. And, um, we need to give him a copy.
Okay.
So. Okay. Okay. So, um, if you look down on the salary, that's what, um, he'll be paid. And we'll give him a six-month probation period and, um, if he does, you know, do great and he's able to handle both positions, we, um, will be giving him, um, a raise and, um, if he can't, he needs to let us know if he won't be able to handle both positions, so we'll go back to, um, splitting it again like before.
And explain why we're not splitting it. I mean.
Okay, well, we're, we're not, the reason we did put it together was to save the city money. So that's why we put it and small cities are going away with doing, um, dual, which is set, uh, city clerk slash treasurer. And, um, so that's why we put the, them together and Yuli, I mean, we've been talking yesterday and today and she's willing to pick up some of the slack and help him. And he's willing to help her, you know, and we did let him know it's gonna be hectic because he's new, he's got, you know, he's gotta learn it, but, um, I, we're, I'm confident that he can do payroll, he can do billing. And, um, you know, so.
And we're gonna be.
So we have nothing to worry about, right?
So you any?
No, we know it.
About you. Wouldn't it be better?
What else?
No.
I thought, when I talked to MSRC, that Mapton's code wouldn't allow us to put it together, but Rachel, the mayor, excuse me, has administered, checked into it and, and it's acceptable, so. That's what we can do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
You're gonna stay longer than the other guy?
He's retiring.
I'm gonna retire here if I can.
He signed in, but.
Oh, I thought you were gonna be.
You signed your life, you signed your life to Mapton. Right, Larry?
What's that?
You signed your life to the city of Mapton.
Yeah, I did.
And there you go. Hi, Chief.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
I made it back.
Good.
Well, we're happy to have you on board.
Okay, thank you.
Happy to be here. It just happened at the right time. My, my mom, you know, after I told her, she's like, um, it's, it's just a miracle that you asked about the, a job when you came in to pay the water, you know, the, the bill, you know? And, cause normally I would, you know, that, that's how I found out about it.
And I've never seen you when you've come in, to be honest, so.
Yeah, I, I never come in and paid in person, I always paid over the phone.
Oh, okay.
And I thought, well, maybe I could save myself four, three or four bucks or whatever by paying in person.
I like you already, you like to save money. Um, so welcome Larry Verones, he will start Thursday and y'all feel free to stop in and check on the new staff because he's not the only one we brought on today. Um, while you were having surgery and everybody else was, I don't know where, um, we had a girl that was going through applications and, um, she's gonna do city clerk, so she'll be here later on this evening.
Customer service clerk.
Yeah, and, um.
Oh, will she?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna let her fill her and let her do her thing at seven o'clock, so.
Does she have a contract in front of her?
No, we're not doing a contract, I think, because we didn't do a contract and I don't know, put me, Bill, but I don't think we've ever done contracts for customer service, did you get one?
No.
Yeah, and that was my thing, that they never got a contract. So, Bill, do we need to do a contract?
No, I don't think you need a contract for every city employee, so.
No, I'm just wondering, like, if, the only reason I'm asking is because if something happens down the road and we don't have nothing, no paperwork, is that?
So she, we did give her a conditional offer.
Oh, okay.
So we have the conditional offer and it, on there it states, um, how much she'll be making and I think it was just, um, seventeen.
Seventeen, seventy-one, I believe, or something.
Seventeen, and then on six months on her probation period, we would figure it, bring it back to council and then you could go, um, to, I think the next step's eighteen?
Yeah, eighteen something, yeah, close to nineteen.
Lover person?
She's from Pausser and actually, um, I'll let her, I'm gonna let her come in, yeah, you guys are gonna be like, wow, okay? So we were, me and Yuli got a chance to interview her and she blew us away and.
You took my job, Yuli's.
She was having surgery till.
Oh, sorry.
I'm just kidding.
So, do you have any more questions on that?
No.
No. So we're gonna have fully staffed and that's what I need, cause I'm, I've been here since six forty-five this morning.
You look pretty good.
All right, so. So really quick, um, Chief, I know we have discussion of Mapton code enforcement and animal impoundment and Ian is not here, so do you want us to wait till seven o'clock when he comes back?
Yeah, because I saw this part, he's at city hall, so.
He needs to be over here.
I think he was thinking, he must've been thinking seven o'clock. I can call him real quick.
Yes, please, yeah. So we're gonna go ahead and go on to, um, do you have any more questions for Larry before we go on?
No.
Okay, so you all did get to see his, um, contract as the one that.
Yes, we saw it.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and go on to G, um, discussion of the mayor's stipend. So just so you know, that wasn't me asking for it at all. I'll let you, Antonio.
Since you're the one who came in again, Tony.
I came in the other day and I said I worked really hard and I think she needed a raise already.
You're calling her, how, okay.
And then we're gonna find out how much we can bring her up.
Why is it called a stipend here and you're saying raise? There is a difference too.
Well, I said, well, I need to bring you up, whatever we look.
No, I'm just asking, because.
But there's a difference between a raise and a stipend.
Cause a stipend usually is a one-time.
You can pop it at any time.
Yeah.
Where a raise, you can ask.
Yeah.
Well, we're just saying, I'm worried. So I didn't know if she was asking for a, one for all the time or she was asking for one for days, days or weeks or whatever, however long you've been working.
I, I think all the time, because you know, she's been basically focusing, you know, we missing so many people in one week, another week and she's there, there for everything. I, I think so.
I agree.
I think so.
That's good.
Yeah, that's, that's what I.
She's been really working hard after seeing she has.
I asked him the other day, do you have time to go eat today? She said, no, I'm busy, busy with no people and just here, you know, keeping eye on the, on the office.
Just to be honest with you guys, I've gone through so many mayors and Belva was the first one that even got paid at all and I don't go for these raises. That's just me, because everybody like, how many times have I heard from everybody, you know what you're getting into, you're too good. And.
But we're talking, when was the, uh, Belva?
It's not any different. I'm not talking about Belva at the time, she only got five hundred dollars, I'm talking about the last couple of years that we had, they were just as hard, in my opinion, that's just my opinion. So that, that's where I stand, I don't agree with it, I just.
Yeah, I think, I, I guess she's been working.
Well, a stipend, Tony, is different, I, we've done that, you give people money, just one-time money for the, the time that she's put in there because she's had to, because that is an emergency type situation. But that doesn't last for her whole term, that's just a one-time pay and that's, I would agree with something maybe like that, but not raises, I just don't, I'm sorry, that's just, I just wanna be honest.
Yeah, that's, that's why I, I said maybe a raise, you know, so she can make more money.
Okay.
And I think she deserved it already and I know she's done work really.
I think a lot of mayors did, but they need to get it.
No, I, I agree, we need to give her a raise.
It's a lot of work.
You know, cause it's.
It is a lot of work.
It's a lot of work.
I wouldn't do it.
We don't need, we don't need to say if we agree or disagree right now, we'll just.
I wouldn't do it. I wouldn't do the math, I would never do it, I couldn't, I couldn't handle it, too much pressure.
We'll go ahead and, um, we'll go back to F, we'll come back and we'll take that into executive session. We have to, so, um.
We think we, we're gonna do that?
Yeah, yeah, so we're gonna go ahead and do, um, go back to E, um, Ian, uh, for discussion of Mapton code enforcement and animal impoundment.
E, sure. You told him that yesterday.
Thank you for having me. I don't know if that mic's on.
Not number one.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know.
You have to vocalize.
Let us, let us see what you got there.
So what we have, we have. What I've been focusing on, you said for the animal control?
Yes.
For the animal control, we've been handing out a lot of flyers, as much as possible, anybody that we see with dogs. As well as making sure that people are getting in with their licenses, want them to renew or purchase new licenses for their dogs. Being very clear, twenty-five per dog and, um, trying to enforce the city's code for maximum dogs in one dwelling, which is. Typed up a letter here for the, uh, notice of animal impoundment, which will be my next step after verbal warning for these dogs, so we can get them dealt with. As far as people's licenses, we can deal with whatever penalties come after. And are we strictly focusing here on the animal impoundment?
Yep, go ahead and do what you've been.
Okay, we've also been focusing on parking all around. There's several streets that have had a noticeable difference in people parking on the right side of the road. Staying out of public areas, not parking for more than they're supposed to in one spot. Uh, getting cars that do not have tabs, junk vehicles out of people's par, properties, cleaning up the town, making sure that all the garbage and waste is dealt with to just clean up, just have better health all around here in the, in the city. And we've had a lot of compliance with people cleaning, wo, working on it, you know, it's not something that gets done in one day, we're aware, so. We're really just trying to work with people on it and get the best results possible that we can without being.
So you haven't really had a struggle with any of them, I mean, like, I ain't gonna do it.
Well, I mean, there's, there's, there's been one or two who've.
Yeah.
Give me a latitude about it, but for the most part, I've had, uh, good attitudes for people, very compliant, they're taking my position seriously or seriously as I can expect them to. Uh, we've already got several people in getting dog licenses and, uh, I'm working on several more, being active about reminding them.
It's good because we really needed the code enforcer, we really needed you and they see you with the badge and they see you in a car, so now they know we're talking business here in the, in the city of Mapton, so I'm really glad that you're here.
They're gonna get job, Ian.
And I'm gonna, if I can jump in real quick, as far as the dog thing, it's not, you know, to harass people. We, we did have a dog bite about a week ago, it was last week and not licensed and so the idea is to get folks to license their dogs. That way, if, if, uh, if there is a dog out loose and he finds it, at least he's gonna know who it belongs to. So there's a lot more accountability that way and that way, once everybody gets their license, hopefully, then they're gonna realize, well, I better not let my dog loose because Ian's gonna be out there enforcing, so it causes them to take more accountability, keep their dogs tied up or in a cage or in a fenced area. So I think it kinda takes care of the problem on its own, it starts, you know, it starts helping the whole city because then you're gonna have less dogs running around. But before it was a free-for-all, I mean, dogs ran around every which way and nobody knew who it belonged to because none were licensed. And so when you get a license, it's gonna, you have to get, you know, the shots, you have to show proof of shots. So therefore, if it do, does bite somebody, then it goes back to at least have the shots, you know who it belongs to. So, yeah, it's much needed just on the dog thing that he's working on. Um, as far as the, like, the parking, the vehicles, there's a lot of cars that would park the wrong way, you know, they're on sidewalks, you know? There's, there's a lot of issues dealing with code enforcement out there, so he's got his hands, you know, he, he's gonna be busy. But I've already started seeing a couple of streets where they're already complying and, and I think most people are, are gonna comply, you know, it just takes a little getting used to that there's somebody out there enforcing it because, well, I, I never, it's been like that for ten years or, you know? So you get a lot of that, or what about the folks across the street? Believe me, we're getting to them, but right now we gotta talk to you about it and, and they're, they're, uh, it takes a little bit because they're just not used to it, but I think, you know, Ian's been really good with dealing with the same folks and, and they're complying, I think, for the most part. So it's just, uh, you know, getting them to start realizing that, yeah, it's gonna have to get done, there is no choice. But it's also a good time for the city to look better because there's other cities I won't mention, the one I grew up in, I won't mention. But, you know, they, they look pretty rough, so the idea is to make it look better, so the value goes up for everybody, it's a lot more pleasant to come visit, you know, and there's more control. So anyway, so he's been doing a good job, he just started, he spent some time at Granger trying to see what they do over there so he can kinda get an idea of, you know, how we can do it here. But anyway, so right now he's doing a great job for the short amount of time, I mean, it takes time, it's not gonna happen over the year. It's gonna be like years in the, in the making, you know, and little by little, but it'll get there.
Well, we're ready to have you on board.
Thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
I think for that, we can go into executive session and, uh, we'll turn off the cameras and, um, this meeting will adjourn at six fifty-four.